So I'm gonna call the meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Um, so, um, I know Bill Weiss is a regular member who is out today. So we've got one opening for a regular member and two people. So I will see Craig as a regular member tonight. And you can participate as an alternate. All right, thank you. All right, so all those who are able to stand, please stand. So Bill is not here. I can walk through the minutes. Um, I took a look, but let's do page one. Did anyone see anything?
That was good.
Page two. So do I have the motion to accept the minutes? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Amanda, your minutes are great. No, but they, I, they're really like. Oh, no, they, because there were some where we had pages after page. So anyway. Yeah, so nice job. Thank you. Of course, thank you, yeah. Really, what is on our agenda is the P O C B update. So I'll hand it over to him. And then I want to say thank you so much. I, the, um, meeting on January thirtieth, the, the public meeting. I, it was beyond my expectation. We had over a hundred people, correct?
Yes, I counted, one, I counted about one oh two.
Yeah, it was really something, and thank you to all the commissioners that were there, but it was really a robust conversation. And it was, I was so happy that so many people showed up and I thought you did a great job.
Well, thank you very much. I thought the conversation was very good also because even you, you start off on a planning process, even as a resident of Simsbury. Um, but you don't always know what's sort of on the collective mind. And that's why I love doing that meeting so much. And the amount of communication that people give us without them really knowing it. When they identify crowds and sorrys and put their planning points in boxes. The message that they're sending is really useful for us in terms of where we go from here. So that's why it's just a great segue from our survey and in this meeting. Um, till next month, we'll be starting on plan elements and stuff. Yeah, enjoyed it. So I think, well, what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of go through the booklet. Get your thoughts and feedback. My envision is part of the preparation of the planned chapters that will weave this information into those chapters to update, you know, what people thought about different issues. The level of importance they placed on it. Priority shifted a little bit from our meeting when we prepared the, uh, twenty, uh, fifteen. Um, so I, I think that there's a story in a sense there. Uh, and so I think that this information along with the survey is going to set the stage really well for the chapters. Um, so, uh, the booklet is laid out, uh, much as the meeting unfolded, uh, you really can't see on the cover photograph, but people came from all parts of Simsbury, all neighborhoods. I didn't see any real cluster from any particular area, so we didn't have, you know, a local or neighborhood issue that was driving people crazy. So I felt that we got good feedback from all parts of the community and that's always nice to see. Um, on the next page, uh, we asked people what they were proud of. Um, and I think proud is a, a word that has been chosen over the years purposefully. Because if you ask people what they like, you get different responses. If you ask people, why are you here? You get different responses. But if you ask them what they're proud of, they, they turn inward and think about, you know, what resonates with them. I gave the cards to George, so he's got them if you decide that you want to read them yourselves. But I, I gave you the, the notes I took too to characterize, yeah. So, um, this is the overall summary tabulation of what people identified and talked about. As you can see, Simsbury Farms, Simsbury Meadows, Performing Arts Center, um, schools, library were, um, very um, high responses. Um, and in the P O C D, we generally group all of those under this concept of community facilities. So what people are saying here, that the facilities that we are fortunate enough to have in town, they appreciate that, they like it, enhances their quality of life. And so that's important for us to know and for the selectmen and, and for others to know. Open space, um, also did quite well, um, in terms of a general category. Um, and, uh, trails, the work of the land trust, et cetera. Then issues related to community character, uh, Simsbury Center and pedestrian bike transit. Um, there were, as you can see from the sidebar, other topics. Um, but really they didn't grab high performance numbers in terms of what people were proud of. So I think when we see kind of a small sample of, of high performers. Again, these are the things that tend to be sticky across a, a lot of different people. Any questions on, on this page or the information is here? I think the map is kind of telling too, right? I always love comparing the crowds map and the sorrys map because, you know, sometimes you get dots on the very same site, but for, for sort of different reasons. Um, so on page four, we asked people, well, what are you sorry about? Um, and this is a little bit different and causes people to really kind of think about those things. That sometimes people are driving in their car and they say, I wish somebody would do something about that. And so the question is, well, what is that? And people started to express their thoughts and ideas here. Um, there were a number of different ways that people expressed of the top category. Which is this concept of over densification, what people express that way or over development or apartments or density. And I think it's really sort of the two, uh, newer multifamily developments. Uh, on the, I guess it'd be the east side of Hot Meadows Street, um, that are just highly visible. And I think people are getting used to it, will get used to it, but it's enough of a shock to people in a sense. That, um, there's perhaps lessons to be learned there for us. And then also the Wagner property. Um, people wish that something would happen more quickly on that property. And I, there must be, you know, good environmental reasons why it's not happened, but again, people drive by and say, why, why doesn't somebody do something? And then, uh.
For, for the record, some, someone is and staff has been talking to a developer to that property. And that, that property will, will file a site plan probably in the next sixty days. For kind of retail uses.
Well, we've implemented plans. Um, the next category was business and economic development. I think people here are expressing a little anxiety, if you will, about sort of the loss of some businesses, places that have gone dark, just a little bit of uncertainty. Some comments is about sort of taxes and town spending, which I, I felt most closely fit into that category. Um, and then comments which I, into community facilities, uh, particularly having to do, for example, the senior center, the community center. Um, and just, you know, thoughts about government in general and, you know, why doesn't government do this or do that, et cetera. So I think, uh.
It was interesting, comments were for and against the senior center.
Yeah, I think.
It was, it was interesting, you know, they weren't, you know, they, anyway, I just thought that that was interesting.
And I think that based on the interviews I've been doing with town department, and we have excellent staff in Simsbury. Haven't met everybody. I was really impressed. So I think people are appreciative of the programs that are offered.
Yeah.
It's a physical facility and I think for the seniors, they think they've been talking about this for quite some time. The town has made efforts on it, but it's still in the same senior center. So they're also expressing a little frustration on that as well. From up to page six now, which is the planning points exercise, which I think starts to reveal issues and priorities for people. So the question we ask people is, why did you put your planning points in this box? What was it about this box? Sometimes people think, oh my gosh, it's an area that needs, you know, work or attention. We need to focus on this. And other people say, oh my gosh, this is perfect. Don't change a thing. So the planning points just identify what's on people's minds. And then the discussion, which goes from the highest point getters down, down the list. Uh, is a way to start to explore sort of those concepts. Um, and I think, uh, the interesting thing here in terms of the responses, um, and if you just take a sneak peek at the top of page seven. We have this chart in the top of page seven that sort of compares in the categories, the relative vote getters. And there's the top tip. These are things which are important to people, um, and these in fact could be, uh, priority elements or issues for us, uh, for the plan. I think they're slated as part of our work effort to get more attention, um, based on what's happened in the past five years. And I think the community supports this. Um, but as you can, it's at least, you know, fifty percent more points than sustainability, which came in a strong third. Um, but everything from sustainability down to walking, biking and bus. Kind of fell into a range. I mean, they, they're all kind of grouped together. Um, and then, uh, ten, eleven and twelve are topics which, um, there seemed to be a noticeable drop off. Um, so I think, and again, people are speaking, uh, if you will. Um, the conundrum that we give to people here, there's twelve boxes. Those twelve boxes are typically topics addressed in a plan. Only get five bills and you're different denominations. So I'm pretty sure I, uh, at least one person put all their points in the sustainability box. And so that did well, but I think other people sort of spread them around and expressed their perspective. And that's where I think the value of the exercise comes in is that sometimes, um, there are things that got a whole lot of five points. Um, and you can actually see that back on page six in the way that the, um, chart is laid out here. Um, if open space, I mean, uh, our community character got, um, nineteen, ten point bills and seventeen five point, uh, bills. Um, so in terms of the twenty, it only got four. So you say to yourself, okay, it's not, it's not top of mind to people, but it's on a lot of people's radar screens and sort of second and third. Um, and so that's why I think that the, knowing the number of planning points that got voted in each of these boxes starts to give you a sense of how important, uh, this is, uh, to people. Um, in terms of, you know, top, top items. Any questions on that? I think then we get into pages eight through eleven, which is a summary of my transcription notes in terms of what happened at the meeting. So I'm scribbling notes. I didn't get everything. So if you guys think I missed something, please, you know, let me know that. Um, either I misheard or misunderstood or mis, misro. Um, was trying to juggle the meeting and, and the notes. Um, and so I think I got, uh, most things, um, but, you know, these are the issues again related to open space. People always feel that, you know, we need to be vigilant about it. Um, it's disappearing, so we, we need to kind of move ahead, et cetera, on that. Um, we have thirty-five percent of our land area, it's estimated that it is open space. So it's not like we're in a thr, total threat mode. But it's so important to people's perception, the character of the community. It's something to continue to be aware of. Um, and I think the question that comes up here too is the management of that. There are a number of comments that came through and some of the planning points, um, crowds and sorrys. How the importance of maintenance of the trails and other things like that. Um, so I think that's an important issue there. Um, people are clearly indicating that economic development is important to them. They feel because of, uh, net tax revenue. Um, and it, it was kind of ironic, right, that people received a revell notices or the reass, shouldn't call it revell. Reassessment notice is pretty much the day of the meeting, so. Town didn't have to sign them up, but a couple of it, they could have waited. Um, but I think again, uh, is people would like to have economic development, uh, in the community. Where and how, um, I think is important, uh, overall. Um, and that's why I think we're looking at that. That's something that went through some fundamental changes with COVID. And so I think, uh, that's something for us to take a closer look at. Sustainability did quite well in terms of the number of points. And I think, you know, it resonated with a lot of people. Um, it's one of those, those words which can, can fall into ecologic or economic or social sustainability. Um, and so people could respond for a lot of different reasons. Um, and as you know, in the current plan, sustainability is sort of varied in the development section of the plan. Almost less than a full page. And I think this is one of the things that's changed quite a bit over the last five years. And likely to be a bigger issue in the future too is, um. So I think the current sense I have is to try to create a new sustainability chapter, which kind of goes up front and sets the stage. And then the other chapters follow along and build on that concept of sustainable, sustainable cemetery. Is, is really kind of a, a thought or direction here. Um, and the fact that this was third in the number of playing points, um, indicates the importance that people are placing on it.
Can you go back to the business and economic development? So there was a kind of your Simsbury shop or stronger support for small businesses. Did anybody say how or were they just saying in general?
I think, um.
I don't remember hearing how's, but I was just. Yeah, alright, okay.
I was listening for that.
Okay, because I was like, well, what does that mean? So I just.
I, it, it seemed the way, if, if, I remember the context, that was more like, you shouldn't go to a big box store, you should buy local. Type of thing, you know.
That's what they meant.
You shouldn't, you should buy it for businesses in town. There's, there's, you know, that's a way to support and possibly attract more. It seemed to me to be that when I heard it.
Okay.
I think that was part of the conversation. I talked about ethica and the ethica box, you know, things that they had done to try to, you know, promote local activity and local spending. I think for mom and pop businesses, which I think was a phrase also that was used at the meeting. I, I think beleaguered is too strong a word, but, you know, people can go on Amazon and have it. They don't have to go out anywhere or whatever. I mean, I, I try to frequent local businesses because I just think they need a little bit of help. They're here and I love the fact they're right around the corner. So, um, but I think it's gotta be a challenge for some of these businesses too.
Well, we're thankful that you still have Hartley's story. You know, it's around the trades all the way over to another town. This were a watcher.
And I just, I was gonna comment on the sustainability is, especially the, you know, the ecological and comment number three. I guess it would be number two. The exits on, uh, on route nine of all. I don't want to get into that, but, uh, in any case, um, that, um, you know, one of the things, you know, I, I'm on board of Simsbury pollinator path, but that's one of the things that we're working towards. Is, is, you know, land, sustainable landscaping plan. Um, you, you know, um, re, reestablishing the pollinator populations, bird populations, things like that. And I remember a couple of years ago, there was a survey that was done. I don't know if it was by Main Street or something with town where, um, it was basically like, why do you live in Simsbury? And one of the, the, the highest vote getters on that was the availability of green spaces and walking trails. And, you know, that's why families like to, like to live here by, by a long shot. And, uh, you know, so I think those types of things are important. And I would just wrap up by saying, I, I also sit on conservation and I know that, um, when we met joint, that, that joint meeting we had. We, I know we took it very serious on conservation and we drafted sort of a, a list of, I don't want to say suggestions, but, but some random ended language. And I know that, um, you know, we've been working very hard on that and, um, you know, we'll just keep pushing that forward and then bring it, bring it forward. Because I think there's some really good suggestions in there that aren't major rewrites, but, but they're very good additions that would, that would highlight this. Because obviously it's very important to, to residents. I think we're sort of on conservation, like to see what the timing is here, like how soon you would need it. Um, you know, we don't want to linger with it either, but we also don't want to, you know, put it out before we think it's ready. So I mean, what would be a reasonable timeframe? So I'll ask, I'll ask the question that way and bring it back.
I thought Marjorie had sent us that she had some things written down.
When I met, I interviewed Marjorie. To get a sense of the various activities that she's involved in in terms of what's going on. And she shared some information with me. Um, originally we had scheduled going to the Conservation Commission meeting. I think it was in January. That got canceled then February, but February was a big meeting. So, um, we were hoping to kind of make contact. Um, I think our overall schedule anticipates that we're gonna work earnestly on chapters and sections of the plan. So that by the end of May or June, we are now a draft plan.
Okay.
So realistically, I would say as soon as.
Yeah, perfect.
And I have taken my notes, all the interviews that I did with people, my research investigation, I've organized it now based on the chapters of the plan. So I am setting up to start to get into the chapters. So normally I would sort of approach the plan kind of in a sequential way because I think it tells a story. And I think it's useful for us to think about that story as it unfolds. Generally, conservation type topics tend to be closer to the front.
Okay.
So we don't have to do it that way and, and knowing that, that's being worked on.
Yeah.
Um, I'll shuffle things around, et cetera. So I think, uh, um, as soon as, as soon as you guys feel comfortable. But John Wooden, famous basketball coach, hurry but don't rush.
I know, I got you.
Marjorie's direction, I, I, I think was because you, you started to get comments from, from other members of the Conservation Commission. She's like, okay, well, let's get them all together. Talk about them and then get them out. So I think that's, I mean, that's. I don't think it's on the back burner for the Conservation Commission, so.
No, yeah, exactly. And I think, I know, you know, I've been asked, because I stand here as well. Well, you know, when do they need it? When do they need it? And, and so I'll just bring this back and just say, you know, we're, I think we're in a place where we can finalize and bring it forward.
Yeah, I think, your next meeting is beginning of March, correct?
Um. It's, it's every other, yeah, it's Tuesday from plan.
Okay.
But yeah, so I'll put it on our, on that.
Yeah, you know, then we can, we can push that forward.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful for me. Uh, and again, it's just, I can move some things around, um, as necessary depending on how you guys.
Yeah, perfect. Alright, thank you.
Um, bottom of page nine is the topic, housing affordability and needs. Um, and I think this is an important issue, not just for Simsbury, but for, for other communities. Housing has changed so much. It was a topic for many years that sort of took care of itself. And the town's role was to have regulations in place, whether the subdivision or zoning regulations to guide it, but we didn't necessarily get involved in. And now we have a scenario or situation where housing has become incredibly expensive, um, for people who are starting out or suffer um, hiccups in life or other things like that. It can become a huge problem without stable shelter. It's, it's difficult for people to address many other circumstances or situations that they may have. Um, zoning can be a little bit of a challenge here because if, if we don't change zoning, we're stuck where, where we're at. And my wife and I, we're empty nesters and we're thinking, well, what's, what's our housing future and is it in Simsbury? And we want it today, but do we still want to stay in our house? And, you know, I'm sort of in the middle of the baby boom era, if you will. Mid, born in mid fifties, so the question ends up being, well, hmm, what do we do? So I think the benefit we have is that the town prepared an affordable housing plan. So that was done since the twenty seventeen P O C D, so I think we can start to blend that in and then update it for other things that have been happening. As you're sure you're aware, the legislature is now in session. Um, this was a hot topic in the twenty one session, a little bit in the twenty two, but there's many more ideas floating around here in the twenty three session. So I think this is an area for us to sort of monitor. And if we're gonna move chapters around, we, we might actually hold housing back a little bit just to kind of see what comes out of the session and, and know what to do. So again, it's a sensitive issue, as you can tell. Um, based on my experience in other communities, Simsbury is not alone here. Um, the character issue is incredibly important to people. So it's not that they're opposed to affordable housing, that's what, they're afraid of what they think affordable housing is. And if we are able to say to them, well, we can have affordable housing not in front of the Dublin Tower, people say, oh. Okay, or in another situation. So I think how is as important as what? And how we get that point across, I think is important.
I'd like to, um, reiterate a point that Cheryl Cook made. Uh, Cheryl sits on the board of the Simsbury Housing Authority. And there is truly affordable housing by everybody's definition. I, I've had a friend who had to go in there and she was just down and out. I mean, that is as affordable as, as it comes. And, uh, as she said, don't even know if it exists because it is both affordable housing, but it keeps in the character of the town. You know, uh, Simsbury people are kind of easy to please. Just give them some nice woods for a look at. The nice thing is, and visiting my friend there, because that section is wooded and I've seen the same buildings in other towns that were just moved to the sort of the nubs, you know, the, you know, open green. It's also a much nicer, especially if people are having, going through a lot of trauma in their lives. That green, that, that, that wooded space calms things down for everybody.
The challenge we have, I think, is that the housing authority units are reaching an age where they're gonna need attention. So they're trying to make improvements to individual units as funding is available, but realistically. It was common in the fifties, sixties and seventies to build these little one-story sort of bungalows for each person. Which is now we're learning an inefficient use of land. And in fact, in the middle of the winter, if I want to come and borrow a cup of sugar, you know, I gotta get out and walk through snowbanks and all of the other stuff. Whereas.
Clear.
They do, except in the middle of the snowstorm. And so the challenge can be for us, if we're going to have an aging population. People haven't always been able to, they hit hiccups in life or they haven't always been able, out, they outlive their assets, et cetera. There can be a growing need for housing authority type of units. And the question is, how do we make more?
Um, are you suggesting that some of the aging, um, units existing here could be switched out with higher density?
They've done, they've done some master planning there. They, uh, I saw the.
Vessel technologies.
Uh, that's a possibility for them, but I think the first thing is, uh, perhaps as part of the P O C D, we can start to inform and educate. Housing authority, people sort of don't know that it's there physically, because you really sort of can't see the units. We gotta keep your eyes on the road when you're driving by, right? But also people don't know that they're, they're organizationally, alright, they take them for granted. And in fact, if you look at the waiting list and talk about the challenges that they've had in terms of funding, um, there are, there are some challenges.
Yeah, but they've done such a great job.
I agree.
And they believe that they should be in the forefront of any plan.
I agree, and that's part of the conversation we have had. Just to give you a quick heads up, there's two types of units that a housing authority generally produces. Elderly units, uh, and then family units, they're called. Over the years, elderly units have now also been shared with disabled. And it's a little bit socially.
Awkward.
Thank you. Trying to struggle for the right word, that's a good word. Um, and the challenge ends up being is that if a unit becomes available and it goes to a disabled person, they're generally younger. They live in, occupy the unit longer. There's no longer the turnover we used to have. So if Simsbury had, let's just say a hundred units for elderly. Or even though our elderly population has grown, the number of units available for the elderly is now fifty. Because roughly half of the units have gone to the disabled. So it becomes a bigger issue. Uh, it's, it's not a train wreck waiting to happen, but I think it's an area that probably has a community that puts some thought into. Because I think the housing authority does such a great job, they can accomplish much. And if they were to do a partnership with somebody else or find ways to get some adjacent land, et cetera, or even redevelop the land that they've got, could be a big step forward.
We're the people of this country. I mean, when you look at maps of the demographics and, and I'll, I'll have to find it. But it goes from like this light color to dark blue, like every town in the state is about, is, is getting older and will get older. You know, over the next ten or twenty years. It's really, I mean, when you look at the, the pictures, it's going to drop. So there is a real need to be able to have services and housing for people, especially as we age in the state. So there is a real need to be able to have services and housing for people, especially as we age in the states.
Yeah, so A R P says that eighty percent of people prefer to age in place in their current home. Probably where my wife and I are gonna do in our scenario, et cetera, until something happens. And then you can no longer do it. Um, and if you say, if you're out of town, your mom or dad lives in Simsbury and they're no longer able to really kind of. Deal with the cost of their current housing or their scenario, and you say, well, I'll, I'll just trot them on down to the housing authority and, and, you know, sign up for a unit. You're looking at three years. And so it's not a resource which is readily available. It's part of a long-term financial plan. And even that, it may not be available. So there's some challenges that I think as part of the P O C D, we won't have to solve. Cause we've got very talented people available to work on this, but I think to give it credence and recognize it is something, a service that we can do. To be aware and compromise open to this stuff in the future. So Paige.
So can I ask a question about? Just, this is basically out of ignorance on my part, but frankly, is since that affordability issues for elderly is, um. The cost of taxes, maintenance, that kind of thing in the whole. Um, so I know that we have some place in Maine and in the community we're in, um, there are, uh, tax. Or term for it, basically is, is this predators or whatever, people that live in places they consider their homestead.
Yep.
I don't know if that's something that Simsbury.
Connecticut's not the same, quite the same way. Florida has homestead and other provisions like that. Um, so Connecticut, not to the same extent. Simsbury does offer elderly tax relief, different programs for different levels of income, et cetera. Um, there are some communities that have been quite creative in that regard, and I, I have heard stories, um, of other states. Where residents sort of get one tax rate and, you know, ski communities or whatever, the out-of-towners pay a different, et cetera. Um, so I think these are all issues that communities and states are kind of struggling with a little bit. Uh, so elderly tax relief is one, but I mean, even the threshold level. That you have to be below to get the elderly tax relief is, it's not easy to qualify for. So it's possible that it's not as strong as we might want it to be. But these are the challenges. Um, I have a chart in my office that shows the, um, evolution of. Life expectancy over the years and what's happened in the twentieth century with, you know, health improvements and the drugs and all the other stuff that are available. It's crazy. So I, I mean, I don't know what it means, but, you know. Part of the reason why we need more housing units is because there are more of us around. And we're staying here, we're staying bought, so there's not no housing available for other people. And so these are some of the challenges. On page ten, our, uh, conversation we had about community character. And also about community facilities, um, kind of the, uh, importance of these topics to be. On page eleven, like what Simsbury Center. And then we got to the open discussion, which is, uh, again, time was winding down just to throw it open, cause there was a possibility. We weren't gonna get to the topics that people cared about. Um, so there were some interesting things that sort of got tossed in here at the end. So any other thoughts or questions in terms of meeting or questions about next steps in the P O C D process?
Alright, just a general question. Do you, uh, have any noticeable differences in your results from workshop and townwide survey? Anything over there?
Gone back and compared them quite that way. Questions were different, uh, cause I think the public meeting. I think in the survey, we sort of asked direct questions on different topics. In, in the meeting, we kind of use oblique questions. And part of it is just to get people talking and also listening to what other people have to say. In a survey. I can unload and say, and some of the comments in the survey were kind of, you know, people type in, were kind of crazy. Um, but people just, you know, unload and it won't generally do that at a public meeting, or if they do, they, there was some murmuring in the room of some, you know, some of the. The people in the comments.
I mean, broadly, I think thematically, no, I, 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 I think they were very similar.
I would imagine if you insisted they.
Yeah, I think what I anticipate we're doing in the chapters is right up front. Survey, we heard this, the public meeting, we heard that, the conclusion we draw is, and now, boom, we're off and running.
Well, why don't you, why don't you walk us through what, what we are gonna do next?
I don't have, oh my goodness.
Just broadly, you don't have to be specific.
Okay, yeah, so I think the idea here at this point in time is we had identified planned chapters from the twenty seventeen P O C D. Um, that some were, uh, modest or minor work efforts. Um, some of them were modest and some of them were more significant. Um, so, uh, I'm gonna finish organizing my paperwork, et cetera, and prepare for new elements. Now, the plan in twenty seventeen was broken up into sort of conservation-related strategies, development-related strategies. Infrastructure-related strategy. So normally, since those themes have elements. I generally tend to present the same thematic approach to you, cause I think the concepts sort of go together. So that would sort of be my approach. Sustainability is a new topic, so I may go ahead and jump on that one initially. To buy a little bit of time for the conservation stuff, et cetera. There's still a little bit of a challenge with the demographic stuff. We're dealing with this thing called the American Community Survey. Which is based on one in every five hundred households every year. But the margin of error around the data is so big, it's all, I don't know, it's, is it, can I say useless?
No.
It's, it's really kind of a challenge, because you always have to treat it like it's a number, a specific number, but then the margin of error is so big. So the census itself for twenty twenty is supposed to be really thematic. So my hope is, is to kind of hold off on doing the census stuff I would normally do and wait till May and just sneak it in at the end. So rather than do it twice, I'd like to do it once. So normally I would give you the data early, so that we know what we're dealing with. I just, the census has been, it's probably two years, year and a half late.
Well, do April twenty twenty one, one of us do, yeah, due to be released and then.
So, uh. Yeah, it's probably gonna get jumbled a little bit, so it might be sustainability.
But I think we understand, we, we, you know, demographically, I think we understand what the trends have been here. I think we can, you know, anecdotally, we know. Um, we grew a little bit, we, we added residential units, that helped us grow a little bit, so I think we know. We know a little bit about that, we know we're aging, we, we know with those, that those cohorts aren't really changing. So, I mean, we should be able to. We don't need to paint the full picture, but.
Yeah, but one of the things I do like to do is, uh, break the population down into the age cohort and then do a, a whole population projection model. Because sometimes these subtle shifts show up demographically, which is like, whoa, wait a sec. And now it opens our eyes up to some of those.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I, I think the population projection, I think the modern challenge though, in a place like this. Is if you add housing units, you're going to add population, you know, I mean, that, that's what's going to happen, so. That really, that's almost a chicken and the egg discussion.
It is, but I think to show what the change has been from twenty ten to twenty twenty, and again, we're not gonna capture everything, but. Who are we attracting? If we were a company, we would say, well, who are our customers?
Right.
And the issue is, well, the demographics are gonna start to show us who, who are picking up and who are losing. And what does that mean for us if those trends are continued? And that's, I think, what's important, so. I, I'm working, uh, with one community that has really had a situation, they have not attracted young people. So the median age is up over fifty-five, I think it's the highest in Connecticut. And the challenge that they have is that they can no longer support a volunteer fire department and other types of situations. So we kind of take age for granted, cause we know what it is for us. When you look at a community and say, well, well, hang on a second here, wow, what does this mean? So what, it's like, I don't believe happening for Simsbury, we're vibrant, we've got a lot of activity going on, but at least you get a, you know, the future of my home, of course.
I think we're fortunate in school, they're so good here. That's, that's, that's an attraction to families. Yeah, I think that's, that's really key. I know that in pretty much any survey or anything like that, that's done in education, that even. And what we did, you know, people talked about in school. So I mean, that's certainly an advantage to, to things like that. And I do, it would be interesting to see it. You know, the trends, if that, if that holds true.
Yeah, I think one of the things that, um. I've been intrigued about is, uh, with the apartment construction that's occurred over the last ten years, at one point, Mike Lidd was tracking the school enrollments from those projects. And the general sense had always sort of been, oh, school, no, he did not find that as part of the.
There's very few. Out of all those people there, I think it's somewhere below ten percent of some of those kids, I would say somewhere.
Well, I think, I'm, I'm gonna pull up the files that I've got, but it's just, uh. Wouldn't be too difficult, let me think about that, whether, it's fairly simple to get that information.
On Lincoln Lane, uh, right across from the summer most, sort of, you know, units there, I walk my dog through it all the time. And I don't, I don't doubt that it's a few, but I mean, when I walk through, I see bikes and little playscapes and stuff, so it seems to me, just walking through, like there's a lot of kids there.
An interesting thing is, uh, for example, in the bike show, uh, excuse me, the bike, the bus shows up, right? You see a group of kids. And say, oh my God, you know, this is, it's not, but when you think of the number of units that are in there.
Yeah, yeah. It's a pack of like six or seven kids, you got a bus in the morning, I know, come walk the crew out.
But if we would actually take a look at Lincoln Lane and say, well, how many houses on Lincoln Lane and how many kids?
Right.
It's, it's always kind of surprised, so, um, but I think one of the things that's happened with a, uh. Longer lifespans for people, um, is that they have stayed resident in their houses, so they haven't moved out and a family with kids has moved in. And that's often the dynamic that happens. So again, the demographics are just fascinating in that regard. Uh, I'm ready to start working on P O C D chapters and see you, see you in March.
I thought we had talked before about, and I wasn't sure where we ended with this, you have done all of these great interviews with people. Are we gonna see a summary of that before it shows up?
I generally don't do that. No, in other words, I use it as background. I basically say to everybody I talk to, what we talk about in Vegas stays in Vegas. Um, so you can bury your soul with me and tell me what's going on, and then I take this information and figure out how to organize it. Sometimes I don't agree with the conclusion that, or the position that they're advocating for. Other times I think, well, that's some real insight, and I take that with all their stuff. So I try to turn that into information for you guys. I think if I said to them, you know, I'm gonna produce minutes of whatever you say to me, and it might actually change the dynamics of the meeting. So generally, don't do that, and I, I'm part of it, I pledge to people, you know, what we talk about here stays here. So, uh.
Something midway between minutes and then something that appears and we're not sure, right? Cause it's not gonna have any attribution.
No, I mean, I would know where it came from, but to me, it's the thought of the idea. Well, let me think about that. I, I mean, I don't wanna say no, it's not something I had thought of doing or planned on doing. Um, but I could. I'd have to think about how to do that and, and honor my pledge to people that it's anonymous.
Is there something you're looking for, Jenny, or do you just want an overall, like, when you were out there, these were the themes, like what?
Sure, something along those lines, it's a different perspective, right? It's coming from a different place than citizens, right, in the community. So it's a, a different sense of how people are seeing all of these pieces. And if I understand what you just said correctly. We're going to make some evaluative decisions about whether or not some of that information is useful or pointed, so. So we wouldn't see what is, what the evaluation.
It's interesting, because it.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and it might be possible. I, I like to use what I call sidebars in the document, which is a way to portray information and. You get a little snappy icon or something else like that, and say, as part of the interview process, I learned, or the following was learned. Um, and it's not necessarily attributed exactly to who, it could have been, not the superintendent of school said this, but somebody talking about the school said this. But might, might give you some background flavor that this is what I heard. It's, it's a delicate area, cause there's critical, some people say critical things about other people, and I, I think the important thing is what, what should the plan say? But that might be a way to do that, that, uh, could flesh out the document, enrich the document a little bit, so.
So the next step would be for you to start drafting some things.
So at, at this time, our meeting is, is a month before which, did I, March fourteenth, unless, well, we guess, yeah, I, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the first meeting in March will be the.
Fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen.
Our next meeting is.
We'll have.
Like one will be back, just during that first meeting of the month, the kind of meet without.
March fourteen.
And then, so I think, uh, the general sense is March, April and May would be on plan elements. At June, it's all gonna sort of come back together, I would think, as sort of a major document. I think the scope anticipates a sort of community feedback session before we get to a public hearing on adoption. So this, if we think back to the January meeting, we'd say to people, you think we heard you incorporated this in the plan? How are we doing? And they could say, oh, you're not, you're not strong enough here, or you go back off over there, those types of things. And then we can make adjustments as we head towards public hearing. And just find, if we don't do that meeting, people come to the public hearing charged and armed. I think it's a battle, and it's not, we're, we're trying to find consensus. So an introductory meeting and get a little chance for correction if we need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in March.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't have any.
Any update on hiring George?
So there is no update. Uh, we, uh, we just, we failed to identify a, a preferred candidate and we have, um. Re-advertised. We would continue to advertise, yeah. So, yeah, it was still, we have an open assistant planner position.
It's tough, um.
Uh, it's a challenging time.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, um, no correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay. So if nothing else, I will, without objection, close the meeting at. Seven fifty, or seven forty seven.